Before we begin, I did want to acknowledge that April 26th was Administrative Professionals Day, and April 30th to May 6th is Professional Municipal Clerks Week. As a part of which, I want to acknowledge all the professionals across our corporation. Much of the work they do is behind the scenes, so they don't get half the credit that is deserved of them. And because they all work in public sector, they don't hear thank you nearly enough. Personally, I want to thank our clerk Jen. Since joining the Kirkland Lake team, she has not only brought a strong work ethic and true devotion to our community, but also a light and kindness to our office. She is diligent in everything she does for our community and ensures we're always on track. So I am deeply, deeply thankful for her presence here with us. I encourage members of the public, staff, and council to take a moment to celebrate these individuals who continue to work so hard for our community and thank the boss. Welcome. Okay. All to order, the regular council meeting of Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at 4:40 PM in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaverhouse First Nation and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin, Onishewabe, Ojibwe, Cree, and Mati people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor Vah Chava. Be resolved of the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023 be approved as circularly.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Declaration of the cunary interest. Councilor Ranger.
I have two for tonight. I, Janice Ranger, am declaring direct right cunary interest on the agenda of the meeting dated May 2nd, 2023, an open session. Agenda item number 6.4, agenda title, Community Grant Funding Application, Royal Reefer Club of Kirkland Lake. It is indirect, as I am a member of the body. Nature of my interest is as follows. I am a rotarian.
A second declaration. I, Janice Ranger, am declaring direct deemed or indirect cunary interest on the agenda of the meeting dated May 2nd, 2023, an open meeting. Agenda item number 7.1, agenda title, considerations of notices or motions, Northern College Skills Development Forum of Funding. It is direct, as the matter may potentially affect my finances. The nature of my interest is as follows. I am an employee of Northern College.
Thank you. Councilor Dykens.
I, Dolly Dykens, am declaring indirect cunary interest on the agenda of the meeting dated May 2nd, 2023, an open meeting. Agenda item 7.1, agenda title, Northern College Skills Development Forum of Funding. It is indirect, as I am an employee of the body with cunary interest. The nature of my interest is as follows. I am an employee of Northern College.
Thank you. I, Stacy White, am declaring indirect cunary interest on the agenda meeting dated May 2nd, 2023, an open meeting, item number 6.3, agenda title, Community Grant Funding Application, Royal Canadian Legion Branch 87. It is indirect, as I am a member of a body. The nature of my interest is as follows. I was formed in as a Legion member on Friday, April 28th, and as such, do not wish to vote on this item due to my affiliation with this group.
Thank you all. Item number four, petitions and delegation. I'll call up Karen Armstrong and Leo Tadakupit from Community Living Kirkland Lake.
Hi, so I'm Karen.
And I, I'm Leo Tadakupit.
So we're here, of course, on behalf of Community Living. And first of all, I would like to thank Mayor White for declaring May as Community Living Month. It's nice to see our flag flying outside. And we're looking forward to hosting you all at our meet and greet on May 18th at 11:30. So I hope you all can make it. And this year, we're celebrating 76 years of providing support to the town of Kirkland Lake. And now, since some of our COVID restrictions have been lifted, we have some events that we plan for the month of May to celebrate.
We are having outdoors at the Martin, which from 9:00 and until 11:00 AM to on marriage day. We are having a yoga in the park. Session. Session at at the Kenwars Park. On May 17th, 1:00 1:00 PM to 1:50 PM. We are hosting a barbecue from at 11:00 to 2:00 PM. On 7/7 at the Kenwars Park.
Okay, and also along with that too, we just found out we're going to be partnering with the Alzheimer's Society during our barbecue. And they're doing a walk in a couple local areas this year at the same date. So we're going to be collecting donations and having some individuals walk around with some prizes and stuff like that. So that'll go on at the same time. And we're also hosting a bowling tournament with our Special Olympians, taking on local celebrities on May 30th at 6:00 PM. And we're still looking for some local celebrities, so if anybody would like to join, just let us know. It should be lots of fun. And we also have a few exciting surprises that will be showing up on our Facebook page, so please follow us along. And it's under Community Living Kirkland Lake.
We are urging all Kirkland Lakers to come out to our yoga in the park and our barbecue. It will be great to have the support out to help the promote and the acceptance.
And I'm going to give you a sneak peek on our announcement that will be made on our Facebook page tomorrow. We're launching our new mission statement. So it includes our beliefs, our values, and explains why our organization exists, really. And it reads, "Community Living Kirkland Lake encourages and supports persons with intellectual disabilities and their families to ensure that everyone may be actively involved in all aspects of life in our community with full acceptance, dignity, and independence." That's very inspiring to read. "We strive to have full acceptance, and that's why we're celebrating this month." "We want to be known positively in the town of Kirkland Lake." And to have others join us on our celebration, to become aware of the people that we support, and to be comfortable in accepting us when we're out and about in the community. So also, I'm going to leave some calendars too with our events here for you guys.
We would like to thank the mayor and the county and whoever down of Kirkland Lake for helping us achieve our, thank you.
Achieve our goals.
Achieve our goals.
Yes. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from council? Council going?
Yes, to you, worshiped to you, presenters. Your organization has an amazing track record in town. I've had many enjoyable coffees with I don't know if you call them clients, but really it's more your family.
Yeah, people who
They're certainly well-accepted, in my opinion, in the community. And I think that's something all Kirkland Lakes should be proud of. And if you remind me, I will allow my name to stand for that celebrity bowling on May 30th.
Absolutely, 100%.
Because I want to get together with some of the people I know from your organization to see if they can beat me.
They're pretty good.
I bet they are. Yes, thank you for coming today, and I think, you know, it's amazing how well I believe that your, well, fellow family members really are accepted in the community and looked at for, and, you know, they bring a lot of laughs.
Yep.
And happiness.
Yep. Thank you. Anything further from council? I do want to thank you both for coming, Leo and Karen. We do appreciate you sharing your information. And this month is of particular interest to me as a former member of the Community Living family. One thing that I don't think members of the public realize is when they say they're celebrating 76 years of support in Kirkland Lake, it literally means because of members of the Kirkland Lake community 76 years ago, we have Community Living Ontario. Without the work that was done in our community and our community alone, this body wouldn't exist. So that is definitely something that we should all be proud of, and we thank you for coming and sharing that information with us today. And we will see you lots this month. So thank you very much. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Dolly Dykens. Be resolved of the delegation entitled Community Living Kirkland Lake Update be received for information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you for the calendars.
Item number 4.2, Janice Martel, McIntyre Powder Project Update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for welcoming me to speak with you today to provide information on an issue that impacts your community members. My name is Janice Martel, and I am not a resident of Kirkland Lake, but I am a miner's daughter. And my father was impacted by exposure to aluminum inhalation therapy that was also used historically in 11 mines here in the Kirkland Lake and area mining district. Those mines are Chesterville, Kerr Addison, Kirkland Lake Gold, also known as Kirkland Minerals, Lake Shore, Macassa, Silver Knight, Tech Hughes, Tober, Upper Canada, Young Davidson, and Wright-Hardrees. Between 1943 and 1979, more than 25,000 Ontario mine workers were subjected by their employers each work shift to mandatory non-consensual inhalation treatments of finely ground aluminum dust known as McIntyre powder. It was named after McIntyre Porcupine Mines in Timmins, Ontario, where it was developed and distributed to industrial licensees. The aluminum dust was blown into sealed, unventilated miners' change rooms using punctured canisters of McIntyre powder attached to compressed airlines prior to each work shift while the mine workers were changing into their work gear. The theory was that coating miners' lungs with aluminum dust would prevent the lung disease, silicosis. It did not. Instead, McIntyre powder itself caused health issues for many of the workers who were subjected to it. My dad was afflicted with Parkinson's, and in 2015, I started a voluntary effort, known as the McIntyre Powder Project, to document health issues in McIntyre Powder exposed mine workers. That led to formal research that found a link between McIntyre powder inhalation and Parkinson's. The Workplace Safety and Insurance Board, the WSIB, workers' compensation, also acknowledges the contribution that McIntyre powder makes to lung diseases such as COPD. Ongoing investigations by researchers and the Occupational Health Clinics for Ontario Workers, they're known as OCAW, continue into other health issues such as sarcoidosis and cardiovascular disease. These investigations look at the full range of mining exposures, not just McIntyre powder, as well as non-occupational risk factors for developing diseases. Compensation is available for mine workers with health conditions linked to the McIntyre powder or to other mining exposures, including survivor benefits for spouses and dependent children in cases where the worker has died. Next of kin can make WSIB claims on behalf of the estates of deceased workers. The funding, benefits, and supports that are available can be life-changing for mining families, but most people aren't even aware that they can make a worker's compensation claim or how to go about doing so. They need information and they need help. We didn't have that help when Dad was struggling with Parkinson's. And now that compensation is available, I want other impacted families to know that they can get help and how to do so. It is deeply important to me that other families don't have to go through what our family went through at the end of Dad's life. When I started the McIntyre Powder Project, I knew nothing about any of this, and it took a lot of time, effort, and expense to become informed. This week, I'm doing a series of free public information sessions in mining communities to share what I've learned and hopefully help affected mining families to make informed decisions. I'll be presenting here in Kirkland Lake tomorrow morning at the Legion, starting at 10:00 AM, and anyone is welcome to come by and to learn more, and I thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Okay, yeah. Oh, sorry. Vlad, go ahead.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much, Janice. I don't think you remember me. Vlad Chava, Local 653 President and Regional 6 PH R C. I don't know, you know all those alphabets. I recall when you came to the convention, the official convention, saying you're starting this journey here. It's been a very long one, and thank you very much for your steadfastness, steadfastness and your activism on this. I wish you luck. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, to you, Mayor, to our presenter. I followed you on CTV for a number of years now, and I just want to thank you for the work you've done. Lung disease runs in my family. Fortunately, none of us are miners, but that's, I think, why I followed the work you were doing so closely. And it's very important work, because without you, no one would be getting compensated for the powder. And I think I also want to express the fact that more than just the people that are compensated, other people in the public, like myself, appreciate the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. That's me, Angel. It's been, it's been a long hard road.
Yes.
I've had some low moments, so just being welcomed in mining communities and I just don't want anyone to go through what we went through. We had no help. And there's help available, and I want to help you.
Councilor Kylie?
Yeah, great work. My father was a miner and suffered from some causes. Eventually did get a bit of pension late in years, unfortunately, to really enjoy it. But the work that you've done is quite amazing, especially for, on your own. I don't think the mines got up and clapped when they saw you, but
They watch crickets.
Yeah. It's nice to see your efforts restart the field.
Thank you.
And thank you again.
Thank you. There's a lot of people that stood up. I started my voluntary registry in 2015, and if nobody had stood up and said, yes, I was also exposed, nothing would have happened. And there's been good people like the steelworkers and the Occupational Health Clinics for Ontario workers that really carried the ball forward. So, but yeah, you need somebody to stand up first.
Anything further from council? I just want to thank you for your time today. I do appreciate, as a daughter of a miner myself, that you brought this forward and you came today to speak at council and share this information with our community. I do hope anyone listening tonight that is affected by any of these issues will go see you tomorrow at 10:00. And with that, I will have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Rick Owens, seconded by Councilor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved of the delegation entitled McIntyre, Michael, sorry, McIntyre Powder Project Update be received for information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried. Item number 5.1. Minutes, council, April 18th, 2023.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor Vah Chava. If Councilor Chava doesn't
Councilor Chava? Did you need to speak?
No, 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 no.
I apologize. Start over. Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor Vah Chava. Be resolved and council approve the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held April 18th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Item 5.2.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Rick Owens. Be resolved that council adopt the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Museum Advisory Committee held June 1st, 2022, and August 3rd, 2022.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted.
Oh, can I just, just through Mayor and Clerk, just for clarity, do we adopt minutes previous, or do we see, like, if it's from a previous council? It's just me?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council. So you adopt, you approve the council minutes? You adopt any of the minutes of your respective committees of council, and you receive any outside agency?
Okay, so we can adopt the previous council. Thank you. I'm for this.
Sorry, I'll have the vote again. All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Item 5.3.
Moved by Councilor Dolly Dykens, seconded by Councilor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved that council receive the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held February 16th, 2023. Minutes of the Tomiscoming Municipal Association held January 26th and March 30th, 2023. And minutes of the Kirkland Lake Services Board held February 8th, 2023.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number 6.1, 2023, 2024, Connecting Links Program Funding Announcement. Stephen Forte, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. By the mayor, through the council. The Public Works Department has good news to share with you today. The town of Kirkland Lake has been selected for funding through the MTO's 2023, 2024 Connecting Links Program. The project has an estimated value of $1 million, for which the funding covers 90%, and the town is responsible for the other 10%. The project itself is a rehabilitation of about 350 meters of government road from Burnside Drive to the east end limit of the town. This will include the replacement of the asphalt, some replacement of the concrete curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, and also the installation of a pedestrian crosswalk at the intersection of Burnside Drive and Northern Road. The broken, sorry, the project is broken down in two years. Year one, which is 2023, will be the design phase of the project, which has an estimated value of about $40,000, which our portion of that would be 10% of about $4,000. And in 2024, that'll be our second phase, which will be the construction year. This funding program is our main source of funding for our town's Connecting Link, which is Highway 66. Therefore, we do strongly encourage council to take full advantage of this funding opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of council? None noted. I'll have the item read.
Moved by Councilor Rick Owens, seconded by Councilor Patrick Kylie. Be resolved that report number 2023 PW5 entitled 2023-24 Connecting Links Program Funding Announcement, Kirkland Lake Project be received, and that the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to execute a contribution agreement and any related amendments proposed in favor of the municipality without detrimental financial impact with the Ministry of Transportation or designate for funding under the Connecting Links Program towards researching a government road, Highway 66, including pedestrian crosswalk improvements at Burnside Drive, also known as the project. And that council approve the municipal portion, which is 10% of 2023 state one projected cost in the issuance of a request for proposal for engineering services in relation to the said project, and that the municipal portion of the project to a maximum of $5,000 be allocated in the Public Works Department's portion of the 2023 operating budget, and finally, that an execution by law in relation to the contribution agreement you brought forward at a later date.
All in favor? Opposed? None. Sorry, Councilor Owen?
Yes, sorry, worshiped to you, to Stephen. I didn't think of this question, it was appropriate to ask, but do we know how old the infrastructure is underneath that section of the highway?
It's not something that I have personally looked at, but we could determine that.
Well, what, what, sorry. What I'm thinking is, we have the money to do the top. That's part of what it would cost us to replace what's underneath, same time. And I'm wondering if that is, in fact, very old infrastructure underneath. Maybe we should consider changing our tenure plan and look at replacing those pipes while we've got part of the job paid for. This is a suggestion, and I don't know if it's feasible or anything else, but I just wanted to throw that out.
Councilor Owens?
Through you, Madam Mayor, if I remember the conversation correctly with Dick Sit at the time, and Ashley, this is far back when they first brought us, so there's no infrastructure to say, to speak up on that section of the road.
Yeah.
If I remember what Ashley presented.
Yeah, I, I just, I throw that out there. I don't, I don't know. I probably could check with my son and find out. But I, I hope you're right. So.
That's okay. Okay, so that will be investigated by staff and brought back. As far as the motion is concerned, do we need the re-reading of that motion before we vote? We didn't, we didn't pass it because you asked in the middle.
Okay.
Okay, so we will not have a re-reading of the motion, but we will re-vote. All in favor of the motion as presented? Opposed? None noted. Item carried. Thank you, sir. Item 6.2, Community Improvement Plan Funding Application, Free Government Road East, Wilford House, Director of Economic Development. Thank you, sir.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor, to council. The Economic Development Committee met last week, and there were a number of items on the agenda. The next three items on your agenda have come from that meeting. The first one is Free Government Road East. It's a request for funding under the Community Improvement Program. Periodification, again, it is money that council has set aside from a reserve fund that businesses can apply to that will enhance their businesses or contribute to the municipality or creating employment. In this case, the application came from the chiropractic business that is on Government Road, Free Government Road West. The work entail painting of the interior as well as installation of a new floor. Contribution was that it does lower the cost of operating the business in terms of not cleaning carpets all the time, and it does make the business more presentable, as it is doing very well. So the application was for 50% of funding incurred. That comes out to $2,086. And that is the request that is before you with Free Government Road East.
Any questions from council? Councilor Owen?
So all the work is on the interior of that?
Yes, it is.
Anything further from council? I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Janice Ranger. Be resolved that report number 2023, BAV18, entitled Community Improvement Fund Funding Application, Free Government Road East be received. And finally, the council approved $2,006 in funding to be drawn from the Community Improvement Fund Reserve, being 50% of eligible costs for building renovations and improvements to Free Government Road East.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. At this time, I'll have Councilor Casey Owens take over as acting mayor.
So item six point three, Community Grant Funding, Royal Legion Branch eighty seven.
Uh, to you, your worship, uh, to council. The next two items are applications under the community grant, uh, program. For council's applications, program that is established under the economic development. Uh, budget and it is drawing directly from the, uh, tax roll, uh, taxes. It is twenty five thousand dollars a year. We've had a pretty good uptake on this, uh, this year. Legion eighty seven has applied to the program, uh, in order to support. The, uh, installation and removal of, uh, banners and, uh. I always get it wrong, like a commemorative old banner installation and removal. It is money that, uh, would be used to offset the cost of the town itself. Would be applying to the legion as, uh, part of doing that job. So that, uh, amount right now is at fifteen hundred dollars. Um. That's it.
So, what? So basically, the town of Kirkland Lake. Will be given the money of legion and it's coming back to us to offset the cost of hanging these banners, right?
Yes, technically, yes, and I hope that there's a few less exchanging of hands, but yes.
So, and I don't know if this is the time to bring up this question, or. When we passed the bylaw. To set the price, the policy. Uh, for hanging the banners, just I think was an unintended consequence. Of that bylaw now, the legion's gotta pay. Every year to have these bangers. How about, right?
Yes, uh, the proponents that are, uh, bringing forward the, uh, the, the banners that they wish to hang, uh, according to the policy are. Responsible for paying the cost of doing so.
So the legion would have to come back every year to apply for this funding again?
Yes, unless they wish, uh, to approach council in, uh, through a different manner, but at this point, the community grant program is established for that and so any mechanism available.
Hey. Okay, I'll start with that and. Next, any other questions? Councillor Owen?
Yes, through you, uh, chair. I think perhaps, um. Someone should approach the legion to see if there is a more efficient way. Um, it's kind of a waste of staff's time, council's time and legion volunteers' time. To have to reapply each year. Um. That's just, I'm just throwing that out.
I, I kind of agreed that's where I was going with this.
I figured it all through. Yeah, no, I figured that's where you were headed. And I know, I know what the legion initially, it did cause a little bit of hard feelings because they didn't understand. You know, they were getting filled and, and they said, well, you know, things like this always, uh, being done and, and, you know, I mean, it's out of respect for our service people. Um, so I'm wondering if, if maybe, I don't know who the appropriate staff person. Could approach the legion and then make a report back to council.
Does, could it come through council first or does it have?
Well, whatever.
So through you, mister, mister chair, all of council. They can give some context in terms of the flagpole banner, the, the methodology or the thinking rationale behind it. Um, all organizations, if we wanted to have installation and implementation, where that was the actual. It was less than what was actually going to cost public works. Who actually undertake the work for the installation and placement. So without, um. Signaling out to a certain group or groups, uh, in, in town. Uh, community grant programs identified as a mechanism for subsidy, if so wished to.
So if you wanted to change this mechanism, a- and I don't necessarily want to single up a group, but there's certain groups that do. These individuals die for our country. I think it's the least we can do as a municipality if they hang up a banner. So can it be something that council initiates as an amendment to? Off of this or do we have to bring it back?
If it's, if it's the through, if it's the will of council to, uh, want to amend this motion. Uh, insofar as to have staff, um, review the policy, bring a report back council with, uh, other options. Then, then we can do that, certainly that.
Councillor, well, just councillor Dykens, have you heard anything?
Um, yeah, through you. Yeah, forget.
Acting chair.
Acting chair, thank you. Um, that was my question. It can be used by others through other groups through the year as well, right? I understand the. Dying for your country. I, I get that, but just want to be clear, like other groups. Can use it for the majority of the year, right? So. Just.
I'm assuming, yeah, other groups can come through the community grant, uh, application program and ask for grant. Uh, my concern is just this particular group. There's. I see that personally as, you know, with the. Again, individuals die for our country. It's the least we can do as a municipality. That's how I believe, I can't bring the motion this week tonight. I'd bring a different. Councillor, uh, uh, sorry, Ranger.
Through acting mayor. Uh, to council. Um, so some other examples were when we had the hundredth anniversary. When Northern College had their anniversary, they all had to put up banners. So there would be arguments put forward that. Any promotion would benefit the community and tourism group. So I just caution, absolutely respect veterans and the process that you're trying to do. So my recommendation is we approve the motion as it stands now with an amendment that, so that. We can at least move forward with this year's and that there's nothing stopping it and that we ask for a request for a new report from.
Uh, I just, I can't.
Yeah.
I'm watching for.
Are you, are you looking for, um, a motion to, um, to approve with an amendment? To prove the, the motion as it stands, but with an amendment to get other options considered.
Please, okay. One second, I just need to drop this up if you can get it back.
Yeah, there might be others, but.
So can we still ask the question while you're?
I'm listening, so yeah.
Okay. Councillor.
Uh, through you, acting chair. I have never considered the legion similar to any other service group in this town. Um. I have the utmost respect for the people who serve our country. Um. Man come home and suffer silently. Because they chose. To stand in front. Of opposing forces. Um. I don't care who belongs to the legion now. I don't care who goes to the legion. To me, this is out of respect for veterans. And. When I look around the world today. I mean, you don't have to look too far, Ukraine, Africa. You know, we are so fortunate to live in this country. We are so fortunate. To be able to run for this council and sit at this table and voice our opinions. And there is a long history between Branch eighty seven, the Royal Canadian Legion. And the town of Kirkland Lake councils. And it is a very different relationship. Than it has with every other service group, church, organization in the community. And it is out of that. That I. I believe that we should make this easy. Um, easier process. And. Um. I'm not gonna talk about.
Yeah, because we're gonna get off topic.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna drop it there.
Perfect.
Yeah. So I can read the amendment, but yeah. I'm maybe. I'm just gonna read the amendment. So it'll be that the. Resolution, the amendment. To include. And that staff report and information report. With costing options associated with the whole banner. Uh, the town's whole banner policy. Before the end birders, specifically for those rules. Specifically for the legion. Councillor Head. Your second insult. Specifically regarding the Royal Canadian. But we, we will vote on the amendment first.
So on the amendment, all in favor? We can carry.
Okay, so now we're gonna vote on the. Did we call for the vote on?
And on the original motion, all in favor? Or, yeah, you want to read it again?
I'll bring it.
Okay, sir.
So as it ended. It'll be all encompassing here. Moved by councillor Rich Owen, seconded by councillor La Chava. It resolved that report number twenty twenty three, D V nineteen, entitled Community Grant Funding Application. Royal Legion Branch eighty seven be received. That council approved funding in the sum of fifteen hundred dollars in support of the legion's request for financial assistance. Related to commemorative whole banner installation and removal. And that staff report and information report with costing options associated. With the town's whole banner policy specifically regarding the Royal Canadian Legion. And finally, that the grant be drawn from the community grants program. As included in the Economic Development Division's portion of the twenty twenty three operating budget.
All in favor? Carry.
Thank you, councillor Owens. Item number six point four, Community Grant Funding Application. Rotary Club of Purple Lake, Wilford House, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, your worship, that's for you, uh. I'm sorry, it's been twenty years of singing one. It's difficult. I, I mean, it was there. The next application is from the Rotary Club. Um, and the celebrations are. Uh, being organized between Rotary Club and the Lions Club. Uh, Lions Club is organizing the majority of the on the ground events. If I'm misrepresenting that, my apologies. Rotary Club is, uh, organizing, um, the fireworks and. The entertainment. They have applied under the community grant five thousand dollars towards this. Um, they are. Recognition of municipality's contribution will likely help them, uh, secure, uh, funding and assistance from other. Groups in the municipality. Uh, should that be the case, they may be spending more on, um. The entertain, well, not so much entertainment, but the fireworks. Uh, depending on again, what, uh, the uptake is from the community. But at this point, the five thousand dollars is, uh, will go a long way to ensuring that the event does. Happen as planned and that it could grow in the future. It is the first one since, uh, COVID, uh, first in-person celebrations. I think it's very important for the community and certainly for the, uh, organization. Again, the request is for five thousand dollars.
Any questions for members of council? Any statements? None noted. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Casey Owen, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. It resolved that report number twenty twenty three, D V twenty, entitled Community Grant Funding Application. Rotary Club of Kirkland Lake be received. And then council approved funding in the sum of five thousand dollars in support of Rotary's request for financial. Assistance related to the twenty twenty three Canada Day celebrations. And finally, that the grant be drawn for the community grants program. As included in Economic Development Division's portion of the twenty twenty three operating budget.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried. Thank you, sir. Item six point five, Proposed Updates to Town of Kirkland Lake User Fees. Jennifer Armfoym, Minister's School Clerk.
Thank you and through you, madam chair. At a high level, because I don't think anybody wants a summary of ten pages of report. Uh, administration have undertaken an comprehensive. Review of the various schedules associated with the town's user fees by law as amended. As noted within the report, the setting of user fees. Uh, allows the cost of services to be equally distributed amongst users and the public. By thereby reducing the town's reliance on property taxes as a primary funding source. This evening, town departments and divisions have presented before you various changes, removals and additions to user fees. The rationales have been encapsulated in the report. Professional judgment and local indirect-direct impacts and economic factors related to service delivery have been considered in keeping schedules current. Certain fees are proposed below the norms of local and similar size municipalities. In keeping with council's direct direction and enhancing local investment in Kirkland Lake's business community. Uh, the proposed changes enable administration to continue to provide residents, users and the business community with the services they expect from the town. Uh, keeping the user fees by law current is in, is in keeping with all four pillars and various corporate actions as voted in the town's strategic plan. Uh, specifically noted in alignment to strategic priorities section of the report. Uh, in terms of the user fee schedules themselves. We'll note that those, uh, included as part of your report are being displayed in a more accessible format for the ratepayer or user. As well as in a format that will assist administration and change management proposals to council moving forward. So to assist in council deliberation, uh, and, and the public's. Uh, departmental divisional fees are identified as their own separate schedule to the bylaw now. Um, and are to include page numbering. Where a service is no longer active or offered, it is to be removed. It is struck out and the word removed is identified. Where a new service is proposed, it is identified with the word new and the fee is located in the proposed fee column. And where a previous, a previously established user fee is being proposed to be amended, the proposed fee is also identified in that same column. It should be noted that minor typographical errors were appended to directly and are not identifiable on these presented schedules in front of you. Administration is proposing that the updated bylaw on established user fee schedules take effect June first. Prior to approval, it will be placed, a public meeting must be held in accordance with the town's notice by law. This helps ensure the process for establishing user fees is transparent and reasonable. It is being proposed that that public meeting take place on Tuesday, May sixteenth at five forty. At the onset of the regular meeting, so the public meeting held for the twenty twenty three budget. If it is the will of council to proceed with the public meeting, the clerk's office will coordinate comments in written format, either letter, mail or email. Prior to the public meeting, which will be read during the public meeting. Um, any members of the public wishing to speak or present at the public meeting will be asked to attend immediately in person. Those interested in joining digitally will be required to contact my office. If any person attends digitally, they'll be provided with the opportunity to speak in priority to remove any issues with technology because we don't have those here. Of course, in technology, if technology is an issue, comments will be welcomed in writing for those registered individuals. And comments received from council this evening will be responsive and a supplemental report will be prepared for council's consideration on basis theme. Public comments and the discussion of council will drive further reports on June sixth, including the presentation of a bylaw. If so recommended on basis theme. That is my presentation, madam chair. Various members of our administration are present this evening. To address the questions from council that are specific to their respective departments or divisional user fee schedules. In ready.
Thank you. Any questions from councillor? Councillor Ranger?
Through you, madam mayor, to, uh, my secretary, could I ask you a question? Hey, Bonnie, I just want to know, has it ever been considered, um, to have a user fee for some of our. Uh, parks and specialty locations such as Barman's Park in Swastika. Or the Splash Park for usage for parties and special events?
Oh, good question. Through you, councillor, um, through you, madam mayor, to the councillor. Um, we do have the availability to rent any of the park space for private, they rentals. Um, so. Let me rephrase that. To use any of the park space for private, so we encourage. Families who want to use a splash park or a playground, you feel free to go ahead and use it. We don't section off those areas and have private rentals. We haven't in the past. The only areas that we've done private rentals for would be at Civic Park.
So would it be something that, um, your department could consider is, um, charging a user fee to. Produce some revenue for those that want to use. Specifically, I've, I've had experience with firemen's park and there being multiple people trying to use it for events at the same time. So there's no like priority of you, you know, I have a piece of permit, a piece of paper and a permit and I pay for usage of this. And or the splash park or other. This may be something that. Others aren't in favor, but I want it, I want it to be considered.
Mad, madam mayor, this is, uh, no, it's right. Madam mayor, through you to all of council, there might be some zoning implications in terms of parking. Uh, associated with the ability to, um, bar cer- certain. Or to allow for cer- only certain groups to access parking. So we think that the planning department should probably be involved in such a undertaking. Did you remember you got that, sir?
Councillor Owens?
Um, I understand the user by law is, or fees is to recover some of our costs because the. Under the proper, we, we can't run a municipality as a business. Uh, we're here to offer quality of life to our residents and running for profit, uh, as a business would just. Be detrimental, I think, to residents, so we need to keep that in mind. That being said. That being said, the one I have the most issues with is the fire department's charge of the twenty dollars for the burning burning department. Uh up until this year, the fire department used to come to our houses to inspect the fire pit, make sure we were okay. Now we need to go to the fire hall. To get that piece of paper and there's no inspection process done whatsoever. It's now the onus is on the homeowner to make sure, hey, this is illicit criterias. You make sure you follow it. And until we get a complaint from somebody, we're not going to go and see you. So I don't think there's a cost recovery needed for this one, so I don't, especially this year with taxes going up. Um water rates going up, everything going up, I think it's something we be. If we want to consider down the road, for this year, we can give our residents maybe a tower. A break on certain fees that we pay to the municipality, so I'd be asking if we can pull this one off for the two thousand twenty-three year.
Thank you for that. Do you have a response, councillor?
Our chief.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh through you, by the mayor to members of council. Uh we did change the process of how the uh burn permit was issued. Uh there was a significant amount of liability on, potential liability on the town where the current, where the whole process was undertaken. So when we changed the process, yes, the resident goes to the town hall to get the permit and the instructions on what to do. And we looked at various municipalities and those municipalities that were doing it this way. Uh also, those that were. Doing through online, uh were charging anywhere between fifteen to fifty dollars. So we focused in on halfway twenty-five dollars. But um we do understand the council's concern about uh the rising costs. And if this was wanting to be approved and maybe implemented at further time period, thus we have no issues with that.
Thank you for that, councillor Owen.
Yes, sir, your worship, uh I I have to agree with councillor Owens. Um when I got my permit, they came out, they inspected, made sure I had a hose and reach it, they made sure I was like, remember, they did the whole thing. That I'd be willing to pay for. But to come in and buy a piece of paper that says this is what you gotta do. Um when you were getting the whole inspection free before, which I was surprised was free. Um. It doesn't make sense. But having said that, the 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 topic I really want to speak on is airport uh charges. Um this has come up before in the past. That non-residents who rent hangar space or space in the airport office. Uh do not pay a premium price uh when. With all our other services pretty much, uh the library, the the complex, recreation programs. Pay a premium price because they do not, through their taxes, help support that program. The airport loses at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um you can double check me on that, but I believe that's around the right figure. And yet, we're not charging a premium price for people that are renting space there. Um to store their planes. Their taxes are going elsewhere, they're not coming in to support that airport. Um so what I would like to see, the rec department uh charges twenty percent premium price for non-residents. And I think that could be used as a precedent and I would like to see that implemented. So that hopefully we can get a little bit more recovery off the airport and it's fairness to the taxpayers that live in town.
Thank you for that, it has been noted, any further comments? Or additions from council? None noted, I'll have the reading of the motion.
Ah yes, delivery. Uh sorry, June, June sixth. All of these changes.
Okay. So as per the municipal clerk, just a reminder that on May sixteenth, our next meeting prior to, there will be a public meeting in which members of the Kirkland Lake community will be. Able to speak on our user fees. And then it will come back on June sixth for further deliberations at this table. So if there is further comments or questions, you can um bring them forward through the C A O in between time. But we will have further discussions on that June sixth meeting. So that being said, we can have the reading of the motion.
So we'll be moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Lachaba. We have resolved that report number twenty twenty-three C O K nine and I propose updates to town of Kirkland Lake user fees be received. And finally, that a public meeting be held on Tuesday, May sixteenth at five four E P M.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously. At this time, councillor Owens will take chair as well, again, while I bring forth the motion. Do you want to switch?
Right.
Yeah.
So, considered item seven, considered motion, seven point one, Mayor Stacey White for college skills development board of funding.
Um so I trust that all members of council were able to read the motion brought forward by myself and councillor Kylie. This idea for the motion came out of discussions I had with Northern College President Dr Audrey Penner. Regarding public colleges not being independently included in the March twenty twenty-three announced funding for skills training centers. This motion is slightly different than other support motions um we normally present at this table. Because if this motion is passed this evening, Kirkland Lake will be the creator of the movement. To lobby the provincial government on this issue, being the first community to officially shed light on the need for the province to fund colleges. In the area of skilled development. So this will start grassroots at the Kirkland Lake level and be passed through other municipalities from here.
And comments or questions from councillor Bishop?
No, I didn't, oh, sorry, through, I was. For you, uh mister chair. Um I fully support this resolution. Ever since the schools basically withdrew the surfaces of shops. Uh the interest in people going into the trades has dropped dramatically. So this is the only point of entry that we really have uh through the colleges and it's extremely important. Uh there's such a shortage of uh. Uh members of various trades uh in the in the province. So we uh we're hopeful that this movement will uh move forward and uh. Most of the colleges will jump on it as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to caution one thing councillor, councillor Kylie mentioned the trades being taken out of the way. Trades are not taken out of school, school, we have, we we have robust trade programs. Uh I have several students that go on a, by any basis to train a trade program in Earleton. Associated to high school, so high schools in Kirkland. And throughout the province do have solid and robust uh trade program and.
Well, they they do. Like correct my, there's something up, but they're not as um as thorough and as uh. When the, when they had the shops in the schools, um. It was a lot more interest, I think.
I'll stay, keep us on topic, but I'm a shop teacher and I teach it in the school, so we do have again a very robust shop program. So we'll.
In your opinion, yes, thank you.
Yeah, councillor, uh sorry.
Um so I just, I think um maybe what councillor Kylie means is that one time you could go from the high school program into trades perhaps? And now um with the specialized trading, this uh secondary education is required, no? Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Councillor Owen?
Thank you, mister chair. I I think that for a long time. Students weren't channeled as much into um trades. And because they weren't channeled into trades and trades were considered low tech and. A lot of students chose to go another route and I think that's perhaps the issue here.
I mean, I'll, I'll keep it. We'll keep the meeting on topic.
And I'm not, I'm not talking specifically, I'm talking globally, okay, just to make that clear, okay? Um in any case, anything that goes to help Northern College. Um and and perhaps could have Northern College come out of leader in in this area and they have been a leader, especially when it comes to the welding trades. Uh this is known as the best school in Canada, so uh I would certainly support this motion despite other issues at the table.
We are ready.
Sure. Moved by Mayor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Whereas colleges provide more than eighty percent of the in-class portion of apprenticeship training in Ontario. And whereas maintaining a strong college system with high-quality facilities and cutting-edge labs is essential in Ontario. Hopes to make real progress goes in the skills gap. Um. And whereas col- Ontario colleges work with industry and trade unions to develop a skilled labor force. And whereas public colleges were not independently included in the recently announced funding for skills training centers in March twenty twenty-three. And whereas colleges are now funding free training centers on their own and funding is needed to support the state-of-the-art trade training centers. And whereas in some areas of the province, colleges are the only training providers. And no funds will flow into these regions due to the lack of funding as recently announced in March twenty twenty-three. Therefore, be it resolved with the council preparation of the town of Kirkland Lake, request the Ministry of Labor, Immigration, Training and Skills Development reevaluate their trade. Their trades, training, funding approach to include college and funding for skills training. And finally, that this motion be circulated to the Honorable Premier of Ontario, Ministry of Labor, Immigration, Training and Skills Development. Association of Municipalities of Ontario, his AMO, Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, which has been all. M P P Timon's Cochrane and P Timon's James Bay and all municipalities within the District of Timon's.
On favor? Okay.
Thank you councillor Owens, I will now be playing with Karen. Item eight point one, bylaw number twenty-three dash zero zero three.
Moved by councillor Janice Rangers, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. It was all of the following bylaw, be read the first, second and third time, number passed, signed by the mayor and the school clerk. And the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three oh three three, be read the bylaw to appoint a fire chief for the corporation of the town of Kirkland.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously, item.
Sure, okay, I'll make some comments. Um so uh on May the eighth, mister Earl Gray will take the job of fire chief. We're very excited to have mister Gray on board. Uh Earl comes from, right now he's the president of our chief in Marathon. And he has experience also in touch with A, uh Georgian Bay, Rammer Fire Department and also Aurelia. So mister Gray has well over twenty years' experience in the field. And uh we look forward to welcoming, welcoming Earl on May the eighth, uh who will be the judge.
Thank you, mister Smith. Item number nine, questions from council to staff, there was none submitted. Item number ten, notice of motion. None noted at the table this evening. Item number eleven, councillors' reports, updates from members of council. Councillor Owen?
Thank you, um madam mayor, um. I've got a time, I write notes here, I don't want to read back what we just said. I just wanted to uh speak on this being a Canadian mental health week. I've uh never kept it a secret, uh in fact, I shared some of my struggles with mental health when I was a reporter. Um and as well, um my struggles with alcohol. Uh addiction to me is also part of the mental health program and it's now being recognized as that. And I will say. That stigma plays a big role in people not getting help. Um I know when I first went to C M H A, I would take my, I was still working at the time, I was a working reporter. I would take my camera bag with me, so if people saw me going in the door, they would think that I was going in to do a story. Um so sometimes stigma is external from the community back to the person. And sometimes it's internal, the person wearing a belt. You know, what are people gonna think of me, you know, I'm high-profile in the community and they're gonna see me going into this place? So there's still work to be done on the stigma, I think less so on the mental health side, more so on the addiction side. And um. I hope that uh. The people will realize. That mental illness is an illness, addiction is an illness, it's an illness of the brain. And it requires treatment, it's not a choice. It's not a choice. Certain people seem predisposed to addiction. Or to certain mental illnesses. And there should be no shame on them admitting it, standing tall and saying, hey. You know what, I'm a little off today, I'm having a bad day. And I've been very fortunate in that the people I've worked with have been very understanding, but it's not that way for a lot of people. So I just ask people to, to show people with addiction and mental health issues, a little. Respect and compassion because they're sick. And when you're sick, there's a physical disease, you go to the hospital, there's no shame. So when you're sick with mental illness or an addiction and you seek help, there should be no shame. You should be patting them on the back for trying to get well. Um. And also, this. Uh last week, councillor Kylie and myself. Attended a D S A meeting and the audit was presented and they had a clean audit. Um the one thing that kind of sat uh kind of shocked me was the size of the surplus that they had from the year before. Um I can't remember the original figure, but when you take out and, our treasurer will understand this. When you take out the uncompleted projects and the other things that are in the rules of accounting. Um they still have a surplus of over four hundred thousand dollars, which I find uh. Very, very healthy. Um so that's something that I will be keeping an eye on as we go down the road to see what the surplus is next year. Um because I want. I want D S A to have enough money to to provide all the programs that it's supposed to provide. But at the same time, I don't want. Uh the communities to be paying more into D S A than what they should be. And if, if you're gonna keep getting surpluses like that, then, you know, it says to me that communities could afford to pay less. We also had a a very good overview of their human resources program. It was uh very warm and fuzzy. In fact, I almost wanted to put up my hand and resign from the board and apply for a job. Uh but I must give D S A credit, they do not have a big turnover of employers. Um so what their H R person was presenting, obviously works. Um you know, people seem to be quite happy to work there and 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 the management people that are coming to meetings and. And that of all, uh it seems to be a real, a really good place to work, so that was, that was nice to hear. The downside of that is they want councillor Kylie to make a bunch of these uh. Courses, online courses and despite councillor Kylie's uh objections, it looks like we're gonna have to do them, so. Well, actually councillor Kylie, he he he's gonna get off, but yeah, and we all know how I love those online courses. Um Saturday. uh, Mayor White, myself, uh, took part in the Lions Parade, uh, which is pretty amazing because I had to be up and down there for nine o'clock on Saturday morning. Originally, we were supposed to walk from Main Street to, uh, Northern College, but due to the weather, we rode. Uh, which meant that my wife also took part in the parade, but she was representing the retired employees of Kirkland Lake. It was a pretty amazing, uh, day. We also attended their luncheon. And there was two hundred plus Lions in town. Along them with their spouses and, and that. And the feedback that we got from Lion members was really, a, a really strong endorsement of Kirkland Lake. They commented on how clean the downtown area was. They commented on how the people in the hospitality industry, like the, the restaurants and, and, and the motels, how they were, uh, so helpful and friendly and, and, uh, they were, they were really impressed with people in Kirkland Lake. And, uh, so that convention, like, you know, that's major input in their economy as well, so, and that was very enjoyable. The mayor gave a very nice, uh, talk at the luncheon. I fell asleep, no, the mayor gave a very good talk at the luncheon and the Lions, uh, seemed to genuinely appreciate the fact that the town council was represented. Uh, we also had another school tour, which the mayor and myself took part in. It was from Sacred Heart. Uh, it was one of the senior grades at Sacred Heart and, uh, boy, they're a challenge. Um, I thought they'd get my humor, but they did. We could have used the Casey, I could have used councillor Owens, I think, uh, to help us out with this one. Um, it was an interesting experience, to say the least, but the kids paid attention and, and they learned and, uh, I, I think, uh, it's a good thing to get them interested. So even though if they're not gonna show their interest at that age, but that's okay. And, uh, finally, I just want to remind everybody that, uh, this is my cookie week. And the proceeds from that are going to Saint Jerome School, I believe, for a new, new, uh, playground. So I'd like to encourage everybody to support, uh, Saint Jerome and put on a few pounds and go buy tons of smile pieces. So with that, I'll smile and say thank you.
Thank you councillor Owen, councillor Kylie.
To you, your worship. Uh, I attended the flag raising for the document living along with the Mayor Stacy. Uh, a- again, I congratulate them on their seventy-sixth year of, uh, membership in, in this group. Uh, I think they were the founding members in the province, if I recall correctly. Uh, and a great, uh, contribution to the community. Just further to the DSA meeting that Rick and I attended, I the four hundred thousand dollar surplus was a bit of a surprise. I believe a portion of it, a small portion of, uh, was, uh, some of the COVID funding that less than used up, but, uh, certainly uh, four hundred thousand added into our budget. Uh, it's not, uh, a, a great way of handling, uh, uh, the expense to the community, so Rick and I will certainly follow that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further for members of council? Okay, since our last meeting. Oh, councillor Shaba.
Yeah, just turn my mic on. Sorry, I got planes landing here every five, five minutes. Um, okay, I, this is, uh, through you, uh, uh, Madam Chair, to the clerk. I don't know if this is an oversight or not. The minutes of the Kirkland Lake Police Services Board that we have is for February the eighth, uh, that's not the latest one. Uh, I think we reported on this one already.
Um, through you, my mayor to all of council and specifically to councillor Shaba. Um, the, the minutes were not presented to council as of yet because they were not signed.
Okay.
Uh, at the last new services board meeting, which was in April, they, uh, the board passed the April minutes, therefore they were presented to council for, uh, receipt.
Okay.
April will not be, uh, presented to council for receipt until, uh, the next meeting of the services board, uh, which is July, so it'll probably, uh, be coming to council around that time.
Okay, I'll defer my report to them. Thank you.
Okay, uh, since our last meeting dated April eighteen, uh, the Office of the Mayor has met with members of the community regarding Canada's celebration and the possibility of joining forces with local community groups, the Rotary and the Lions Club. We met with the Mayor of Horn Payne via Zoom regarding community partnership opportunities and the Now Office. The two S L G B T Q Steering Committee, um, was, meeting was attended in which funding opportunities for the administrative position was discussed. The group may be requesting a delegation with municipalities in the district to discuss the same in the future. Through staff in the developmental services department, clerk, CAO and fire department, a nearly four-year-old issue regarding an address nine-one-one fire number was resolved. We had an introduct- introductory meeting with MPP Charlie Angus through the staff at the Museum of Northern History. Visual aids for town hall school tours were required, including photos of Anne Shipley, Frank Rainford, Bob Price, members of councils sporting the Blazers in the Kirkland Lake tartans. And finally, Joe Me- Joe Maverick, the mayor responsible for the addition of samples from local mines being added to the chain of office in nineteen eighty-nine. We're hoping that these visual aids will assist interest in the tours. Um, I spoke at the Legion Convention and Memorial Banquet Dinner on behalf of the Town of Kirkland Lake. I attended the library board meeting in which the status report of the children's department refresh project was given as well as the twenty-twenty-two annual report. Um, all members of council and CAO have received a copy of this and I put one downstairs for members of the public in the lobby. On Monday, April twenty-fourth, I attended the art exhibit at the museum put on by Central School in which students use variety of mediums to depict eyes of animals and other creatures. This is an incredible community partnership with the school that hasn't occurred in recent history and the children should be certainly proud of themselves. The Economic Development Committee resulted in three of those reports that we received this evening. Yesterday, I read the proclamation for the flag raising at Community Living Month, which was attended by councillor Kylie. The Chamber of Commerce meeting this afternoon in which local statistics about businesses in Kirkland Lake were presented from the Far North East Training Board. Interesting to note, as of June twenty-twenty-two, there were four hundred and sixty-one businesses in Kirkland Lake, fifty-seven point five of which had zero employees. So a large portion of our community business is actually mom-and-pop operations. The industry with the most significant increase in total employment was healthcare and social assistance. In twenty-twenty-one, there were three hundred and four, three thousand four hundred and fifty-five individuals employed in Kirkland Lake, forty-five point seven were female and fifty-four point three were male. May sixth to fourteenth is Community Cleanup Week. Garbage bags can be picked up at the complex, May fifth to the fourteenth. And these bags can be disposed of in designated bins behind the complex building at fifty-five Allen Avenue. The acceptable items for those bins are trash and litter found outside that can fit in those supply garbage bags. Uh, also, the Myers Memorial and our welcome gateway signs on either side of our community will be lit green for the coronation of King Charles the Third during the weekend of the sixth as well. And that is my report. I will have any motion read, please.
Purge is not prepared. Moved by councillor Owens. Seconded by councillor Owen. Be it resolved that the verbal reports of council be received.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously. Additional information, there is one additional, uh, health and safety issue that came to, uh, us via the clerk. The clerk has recirculated the notice with DSA officials and Timiscaming District clerks. This is, uh, a flood watch. The Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, Timmins Kirkland Lake District, is advising area residents that a flood watch, it watch is in effect for the district until Friday, May twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. The Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, Timmins Kirkland Lake, is advising the area residents. Residents in Kirkland Lake and surrounding area of the district should exercise special caution around rivers and streams. Spring temperatures along with forecasted precipitation throughout the district are expected to increase melting, resulting in increased runoff and increased levels and flows. Please alert any children under your care uh, to these possible dangers and supervise their activities. Flooding may occur in low-lying areas that are prone to flooding. The ministry is closely monitoring the weather and developing watershed conditions. Further updates will be issued as appropriate. And for more information, please visit, uh, the, the website directly. So that is an unexpected addition. And please be aware of those, um, dangers in our community. Item number twelve point one is the following proclamation. Whereas in nineteen eighty-five, the federal government, along with Canadian Nurses Association, established the second week of May as National Nursing Week to recognize the dedication and vital contributions that generations of nurses have made to the healthcare system. And whereas nurses help citizens achieve optimal health and wellness by promoting health, preventing illness and providing direct care across all healthcare sectors, including the front lines in hospitals, primary care centers, long-term care, public health in the community sector, and education and research. And whereas this National Nursing Week theme, Our Nurses, Our Future, recognizes the courage and commitment all nurses, including RNs, RPMs, nurse practitioners and PSWs, show in a patient's healthcare journey to tirelessly provide care and compassion, especially over the past three years during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas the Town of Kirkland Lake is dedicated to the health and well-being of its community members. Now, therefore, I, Stacy White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim May eighth to the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three as National Nursing Week. Item number twelve point two is the following proclamation. Whereas the third week in May of each year is recognized across North America as Paramedic Services Week by municipalities, paramedic organizations and associations, as well as other levels of government. And whereas Paramedic Service Week is May twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. And whereas the District of Timiscaming Social Service Administration Board, Emergency Medical Services, serve the people of the district every day. We take the opportunity to recognize the exceptional service they, they provide from their prompt and compassionate response to our citizens in urgent need to their supporting role of community paramedics. And whereas paramedics dedicate their lives to public service and their skills often make the difference when community members are at their most vulnerable. And whereas access to the quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness, illness or injury. And whereas the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake wishes to recognize the important contribution of the sixty-three part-time and full-time paramedics who work of the three bases across the district, as well as recognize the paramedics across Canada. And whereas Kirkland Lake residents and members of this community are urged to recognize the vital contributions provided by all paramedics in the District of Timiscaming. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Stacy White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim May twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three as Paramedic Services Week. And I will have the reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Patrick Kylie. Be it resolved that council sanction the proclamations for National Nursing Week and Paramedic Services Week in the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted, item carried unanimously. We'll now take a ten-minute resort, reset in between opening and closing. Okay, we will now reconvene to open session.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger. Be it resolved that council reconvened at open session at seven eleven, yeah.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimously. Any declaration of culinary interest from in camera? None was noted, noted. Item number fourteen, matters from closed session. Item fourteen point one, request to purchase mining claim sixteen four seven eight being P I N one-two-two-eight dash one-eight-seven-five.
Okay, I'm just going to make some minor amendments to that. It's part of mining claim one-six-four-seven. And it's pin six-one-two-two-eight, one-eight-seven-five. Uh, moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. It resolved that report number twenty-three D E B twenty-one entitled request to purchase part of mining claim one-six-four-seven-eight being pin six-one-two-two-eight, one-eight-seven-five be received. And that council declare part of mining claim one-six-four-seven-eight being pin six-one-two-two-eight, one-eight-seven-five with surplus land. And that council approve the sale of the part of the mining claim one-six-four-seven-eight being pin six-one-two-two-eight, one-eight-seven-five to Hydro One Networks aimed for the price of thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. And that council authorized Mayor Municipal Kirkfix to be offered a purchase and all appropriate sale documents as may be required. And finally, that council authorized the bylaw, the sale of property be given three readings at an upcoming meeting.
All in favor? No opposed, item carried unanimously. Item number fourteen point two, supplemental committee of council, public appointment.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Owen. Be it resolved that the following individual be appointed to the Kirkland Lake Economic Development Committee for the year twenty-twenty-three and as Colonel Council, Sarah Holden.
All in favor? Opposed, none noted. Item carried unanimously. Item number fifteen, fifteen point one, bylaw number twenty-three oh three four.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Jolly Dykens. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read first, second, and third time number passed, signed by the Mayor of the municipal and the seal of the corporation being fixed there too. File number twenty-three thirty-four being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, oh, this meeting, I'll do something second.
All in favor? All in favor? No opposed. Item carried unanimously. Number sixteen adjournment.
Moved by councillor Patrick Kylie, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. It resolved that this regular meeting of council do now enter at seven four twenty-one.
All in favor? No opposed, noted, item carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone.